I don't know.
Susan, can you hear us? We're like, oh, flying around.
Yes, I can hear you. Whoops.
We have a really small speaker here, so I'm gonna try to turn it up. Yeah. All right, we're at a hundred percent, so.
Well, look, I can see me.
When they're quiet, you'll be able to see them.
Hi, I'm right here.
No, it's fine. Hey, yeah, no, it looks good, and it actually sounds fine.
Okay, switch it to that. It's coming through here. They're there. I heard it.
No, say something, Susan.
Hello?
Yeah.
Testing, one, two.
Oh, you're hearing it.
I mean, it's not like a shark.
Sorry, did you sign in from the next one? No, and he hasn't texted me back. Yeah. No. If he misses it, he misses it. Miss call, I thought. Five, but you said. He just tried.
Yeah. Those are good calls.
Facebook.
Yeah.
It's my own login. I log in as myself, and then I have access. There is no login. You have to log in your own.
I bought cold weather, well, not cold weather, like short season.
And I prefer to go on them.
I was like, I saw the.
No, I'm not. Kind of, since I'm using Serena's computer, I gotta log into Facebook.
I will get. That's kind of just one of them.
So she's been trying, you know.
Yeah.
She's been trying. And she's like, in the last.
It's gonna be my cemetery this year. Oh.
Once she has children, she'll be like.
Yeah.
She's like, yeah. Yay, buddy.
Oh, you're on your other, on your phone, probably sending yourself one, because it's.
Been a little.
Fresh.
My passenger's been loaded, too. I've had wheelchair.
Nothing has come through.
A great service.
So check your face. Shaping's for notification. Yeah, you have to go into like your studies part, like you're gonna look at memories. They'll be in there.
Yeah. We know a lot of them. I've got three dialers. One in commission. It can go with it.
Yeah.
Where are notifications?
Anybody, anybody need a job?
It's like.
The post office is looking for somebody at Willow Creek.
Should be in here.
They said that.
Not a row.
Not a carrier. Oh, you would be right at the post office. Willie asked me if I knew somebody today, and I said, oh, ask around. I still have.
Oh, try another way, see if there's some.
That'd be a good job for you, Georgie. Make a good post man. Are you know?
Oh, yeah, I'll text it to you.
I think they'll pay pretty good.
I think they do.
Yeah.
I have benefits.
So Willow Creek wasn't too bad.
No, they've been waiting forever. I mean, you know, the three fourths one's covering Harrison and Willow Creek all, like, all last year.
Said that they know enough people in the three, they gotta go to. Amazing.
No.
Lori, our public, how are you doing tonight?
Fine. How are you?
Good.
We're almost ready.
This has been part of transition. I think it's gonna be worth it.
Well, we tried to get in here yesterday and set up, but then they had that train accident, so we couldn't come.
And then our computer isn't, wasn't working, so I got, went home and got my daughters, and so now I gotta.
We might have to buy a new computer.
No, it's working now.
Driving the tractor.
I don't know. One of, one of, one of Ruby's neighbors. So I don't know who that is.
I'm sorry, taking down.
My fingers.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I.
Oh, really? I thought he did go to a hospital, but not for the hospital. That's pretty impressive. Maybe he jumped out of it, because like, it ripped off the front part of them.
I saw it.
Almost like, I mean, a hundred percent.
Carly, Carly from Grace. Yeah, she said she went, she went for whoever that was, and she called Carly.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, Randy, should be good. No, it was an attractor. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Why are we gonna call him?
I know, but it's still loading.
Right.
Randy, you can start.
Yeah, right.
We can start.
Yeah.
This meeting will now come to order. We will have the roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Garrett?
Here.
Reagan?
Yeah.
And yours.
Here.
Start here tonight, so. At this time, we'll have the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting will be.
You might wanna talk a little louder, because the mic's way over here for Susan Swinley.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is audio recorded. And at this time, are there any public comments or items on the agenda? There is none. Our next item will be consent agenda. Approval of the following. A with claims paid due to timeliness on twelve nineteen twenty twenty four totaling forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. B, claim paid due to timeliness on twelve twenty-four twenty twenty four totaling five hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. C, city claims to be paid. D, three forks rodeo arena board claims to be paid. E, council minute on twelve ten twenty twenty four. F, service agreement with Bay Drake Electric to upgrade lighting in the Three Parks Community Library for six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents, signed by the mayor on twelve eleven twenty twenty four. G, service agreement for uh, form, format architects for drawings of the city hall remodel up to five thousand, three hundred dollars, signed by mayor on twelve sixteen twenty twenty four. H, service agreement for TNT Electrical for electrical services of the city hall remodel for eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars, signed by the mayor on twelve twenty 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 four. I, customer agreement with Northwest Energy can permit and install new power at the fire hall for five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, signed by the mayor on twelve sixteen twenty twenty four. J, draw number twenty-four for the water project totaling twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents from mil, uh, minimum allocation grant, MAG, reimbursement of one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. Local fiscal recovery, LRF, reimbursement of four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents.
Get that.
And market talk reimbursement of twenty-one thousand, ninety dollars, signed by the mayor on twelve seventeen twenty twenty four. K, number, uh, draw number twenty-five for the water project totaling eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-five cents, minimum allocation grant or MAG reimbursement. I, uh, L, uh, task order number nine, amendment number five, for the water system improvements for complete design, bidding, construction, oversight, administration, and R, P, R, and record documents for well two C for a hundred and five thousand dollars. And M, pledge security report through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty four from Glacier Bank. Are there any questions on our consent agenda? Sorry, I didn't get the message. I said it over there, but.
I told you at the water sewer committee, we were over here.
I think they're gonna have any questions on our, uh, consent fee? Do I have a motion that you accept your consent agenda? Don't move. Second, it has been moved secondly to accepting. Do we have any question from the public? No? Okay, consent just agenda, we'll have the vote then. Jean?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
And George, consent agenda is passed. We do not have any public hearings. Uh, report of bottle suits, Crystal?
I don't have much to report, other than we are bouncing around in all of our meetings. Here, the annex, the library, so it is in the emails, it is on the website. Um, just please call us if you have any questions, so, because we, we're changing often.
Yeah, the one on the twenty-eighth is gonna be at the annex. And then they'll probably be in the library after that.
As long as, like, if it's just this size group, we'll just have them in the library, you know, it's not a big deal, but like, we have, where even if I anticipate five people coming, we'll find another location.
Um, is that the annex, is that the?
Yeah, it must be church on Cedar Street.
Yep, right over there.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that's what I did. He pointed that way.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's over there. Um, I don't really have anything else to report, other than we're, we're in our spot, um. People have found us. It's cozy and quaint, and it's probably gonna take a lot longer than we thought it was going to be, so.
I just want to thank you for everything for the moves.
I'm gonna report on that. So, thank, you're welcome. We, being closed those two days, we were, we, we were able to, like, move on the thirtieth. We still were on our computers, working for a couple of hours until the movers showed up, and then, um, we packed our stuff up that, and then computers and worked on the rest of the day. I'm setting everything up in the new city hall in the basement. And then the next day, we tried to answer emails and phone calls for three or four hours, and then we went over to the city hall and went upstairs, because those was removing some of the walls and to not have to put a beam in, we had, we can't have any weight up there. So it'll all just be connected with, like, I don't know how Susan maybe can see me, um, from the ceiling to the, the floor of the attic, which is the ceiling down below, will have all sorts of wood attaching that to the structure on the joists in the roof. Um, and so everything that was up there, most of it, which I've been going through for the last ten years, um, I'm glad that I put, like, on record retention requests of bank statements from nineteen seventy to nineteen ninety-five, even finally found nineteen eighty-eight, because we found them all, and we were able to throw most of them away. We took, oh, I would say almost thirty-two hundred pounds of records, empty crap, and stuff that people stored up there that had no business being records at all. Just is filthy and covered. We spent three and a half hours doing that, and then Anthony held it all to the dump for us, so.
Two loads of the trailer.
We, um, have everything that we do have to keep, or stuff that we didn't have time to actually go through. We moved to one area that's probably just about the back, size of the back room in the ba- bathroom. That's where we can store above, and we fit it all there right now, so, right now, we've gone through a lot of stuff. Pretty cool.
It's a kitchen ceiling, dog.
It's still in there, and we plan to repurpose some of that for you guys.
Quite valuable.
It's really pretty. Um, yeah, there is a punched tin ceiling through the, almost the whole thing up there in the attic, and we talked about that it's gonna cost a lot for them to take that down, and so we talked about only where they have to take down, maybe take enough that they can put like a backsplash behind where you guys will be, and we can have it framed in on the wall. Um, instead, because I wanted to bring it, the ceilings all the way up, but we'd have to actually install a new roof so that we could have insulation. Wasn't gonna, yeah, wasn't gonna be viable.
Yeah, it was gonna be a pretty big project for that, but we're hoping to be able to get some of the tin down. They have to take some down for some of the stuff they're doing anyway.
Attaching.
So if, we think it's screwed in, so if it's screwed in, then they'll take some of them down, and we can hopefully do something downstairs with it, because it is really pretty.
That's cool.
Mm-hmm, but.
It's been painted, have they?
No, no, it's never been painted. They're just tin.
It's just tin up there.
Comes to mayor that we had an offer to buy him, and we, as the council, said, no, we don't wanna sell. We started selling the city hall piece by piece.
Yeah. It was.
At the time, the person didn't offer much money.
Yeah.
It wasn't a very good deal.
It, it was kinda sad to throw some of the stuff away. There was, like, old books, bound books, that were, where somebody, like, would go out and manually read the meter with this beautiful penmanship from the thirties, and factor the bill, and it said who it was, and what the address was, and the date of their bill, and like, there was hundreds of them. And I, we threw them all away. They're not a record. There's no purpose in us keeping them. They were cool. We saved some things for, like, some sort of shadow box, or bookcase, or something that we can put in. We have really old dog tags, too.
Found one of the books that was the original ticket book for the city of Three Parks, and most of the first tickets were vagrancy and drunkenness.
Mm-hmm. Be kind of fun to display some of this section.
Well, and some of the stuff that we thought that you might, actually, the museum might have liked that we were taking, but it was, they were like ledger books from this, like, each, these books were this big, like, from here to here, and that would be, you'd have to open the book like that, and that was the cash. And there's another one for the water fund, and there was another one for the, well, I don't know, there was like four or five different kinds, and they, they were, and we just didn't have time for that. We just went one. And we don't keep minutes like that anymore in those bound books. Those bound books are expensive, the paper's expensive, and we have things digitized, so. We lost some of that history, but we did keep some of them.
Yeah.
For looks.
We still got the minutes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Minutes. I didn't throw any of those away, but there was, there was like meter readings and cash register reports and stuff like that that we didn't keep.
We've done a lot.
And we did a lot.
Anything else, Crystal?
No.
No, Kelly?
I don't have anything else.
Susan, do you have anything?
No, but thanks for asking.
He didn't take it. He just passed it at one oh five. We'll do another one.
Next slide was reports from council committees. Did you, oh, do I need to give it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we did have a uh, sewer and water meeting the other day, last Friday at ten o'clock over here at the library with, uh, uh, Great West Engineering, Ed, myself, and Crystal and Kelly and Wally, I guess, was there.
No, Susan Hayes. Susan Hayes.
And Susan Hayes. And, uh, basically, Susan caused us to, uh, uh, speed on, uh, well two C, which looks like it's gonna have around two hundred gallons per minute, under ninety, two hundred, someplace in there. Um, and right now, we're just waiting, uh, for O'Keefe to come back in and do some stuff, and I mean, there's a bunch, a lot of stuff that'd be done. We still have to build a pump house, hook some things up, but everything, the water quality's good, the volume's good. Uh, so it looks like it's a go. It looks like it's a successful well. And, uh, we talked about the possibility of drilling another well, or using the well that was drilled up by the uh, water tower, up by the reservoir, uh, which produced about ninety gallons a minute when.
Yeah, seven, no, it was a range, yeah.
And, uh, so Susan thought that maybe we should pump test that first to make sure, uh, what it would do, and, uh, the water quality seems pretty good in that well, but then there's also the idea of maybe, because there's enough wa, enough money left in this fund to probably drill another well. And so they were thinking about going, I'm gonna call it, uh, north on a little bit of the well there on Kid Road that we just went out to two C. And, uh, we thought, what she figured was maybe four or five hundred yards, and then put in another well there, and do some pump testing to see if it, uh, had a significant drawdown to well two C. But if, uh, we can find uh, a good water source, again, with, uh, good quality water and a good volume, is that we may put that well right there, and uh, for reasons that is close to your, uh, your main lines that are going up to the water tanks, and so, uh, you're not running a whole bunch of water line to connect uh, your the, the company that is putting in, uh, supposed subdivision out there, they're willing to work with us on, uh, La- Launis property to put the well on at low cost, and and so it looks like it probably, we're gonna be somewhat drilling, but, uh, well two C, which we changed to thirteen?
Yeah.
Thir, it was gonna be well thirteen. We thought we should keep these in, uh, order, and I think we have a, remember well twelve?
I think this one's, this one's twelve.
This one's twelve.
What we're calling two C will be twelve, when we actually send it to the NRS.
No, it'll be two C, because it's already.
We're gonna call it.
Okay.
Everything looked good, and then, you know, we're actually, uh, also needing to spend that ARPA money, because at the end of this year, what we don't spend, we have to give back. And so we, you know, in Jean's opinion, but maybe everybody else's, we'd be damn fool to give it back. We should spend it, and but we do have, uh, considerable amount that's gonna go towards the, uh, replacement of the water mains in town, the looping system, which we do have enough money for that, too, and that'll go out to bid probably in March, I believe, as you said.
Think they're gonna try to get it out by first of February.
February.
So that they can get on somebody's schedule, because we have to have it spent by December thirty-first. It's almost three million dollars.
Oh, it was actually a very good meeting. I was happy with the results, and, uh, and it looks like they were gonna get the water guy out there to do a little checking on some stuff, but that would be Dave Don't you.
Yeah.
Our hydrologist.
Hydrologist.
They're surveying.
And the idea behind, uh, another well was, uh, she thought we could use, like, another six, seventy or seventy-five gallons a minute overall, and so, uh, if we did another well, we wouldn't necessarily have to put in a pump that pumps two hundred gallons a minute uh, for right, to start with, and then if we needed, we could drop us another pump down if we ever needed it, but you know, the idea was just to get a, us, another small amount, you know, maybe up to a hundred gallons.
And the reason for that is, is that we have what the state requires, DEQ requires, that if you have your major well, which would probably, let's say, be well number two, the Connors well, if it was to go down for any kind of length of time, you have to have enough backup to, to give this formula, and so that if, if, that's why she said if you just went with a hundred gallons, and with the two hundred you got, you would beat that requirement for uh, the state for DEQ, if you get it to spec.
And this particular well, too, as we said, will have the generator.
Yes.
Yeah, so that'll be nice, too. And there was talk about putting a generator in another well as well, or just this newest.
By, uh, here by well six, which is by the city shop.
Okay.
And, uh, that will run the shop for power and the well, in case we have power out, it's been so long, we can still use our shop. Get in and out there. So we had a little discussion on what it was gonna be powered by, and, uh, uh, she said, uh, generators that she had been involved with were diesel-powered, and I, the ones we've had here in town have been natural gas and propane, which I think is a better way to go than diesel.
I think natural gases.
Yeah, so, you know, you can get a natural gas. The one out by the lift station's a natural gas generator. The, yeah, our lift station in town is natural gas, but the one out at our new, uh, wastewater plant is propane.
Propane.
We've had issues with the generator starting in cold weather. We put, uh, these big blank, key, key blankets on it to get the temperature to come up, because once propane gets cold, it doesn't wanna move, so once we did that, we're in pretty good shape, but, yeah, natural gas is the way to go.
Most of the generators that I hook up on fancy houses are natural gas, because there's also that, uh, worry of a reservoir of diesel, that eventually, all things holding liquid, liquid will leak, and having, especially if it's right by your well, you know, you don't wanna have a big bad diesel sitting on top of your well, and you can help it. But propane or gases.
You know, the, uh, the generator down at the lift station has been pretty, I mean, I know we've worked on it in the past, but it's been a pretty good thing. It's been run, set up to start every week for, run for an hour and stuff like.
Well, yeah, what we have, all the generators exercise, just to make sure, and, and, you know, when they're running, and that's part of, part of the, uh, public works, uh, maintenance sheet is, did it start? How long did it run? And then, so this, the, the one, like I said, down there at the lift station, it's Ford three ninety or something. It's been there, well, since eighty-two, and yeah, it's great. And I'm glad, like I said at the last meeting, that the firehouse can air it up.
So, so good meeting.
Yeah, really good.
Anything, other questions of Jean?
I, I would just add that, that change, so they talked about the change order that was on your consent agenda tonight, so that we could get all this stuff done by the end of the year. Susan Hayes found out today that it's gonna cost twenty thousand more, because that was her estimate number, and so we'll have another amendment to task order nine to get the increase of that, because of the structural part was twenty thousand dollars underestimated. That'll be at the next meeting.
Twenty thousand?
Structural, so if, like, for the new building, she just threw out a number thinking that would cover it, and when, but then there was another engineer in Great West that was doing how much the building would actually cost. He got her the real numbers today, and it was twenty thousand dollars more.
Well, at, at that meeting, uh, it was said that the me, the building was gonna be a block building or a brick building. And I thought that the price was a little under, because
Oh.
Blocks later, bricks later, it's, uh, quite expensive anyway.
Oh, yeah, it's not the bricks that are expensive, it's the mason, the mason to do all the work, huh, the labor.
Okay, uh, I guess that's all for Dean and unfinished business. What's playing the innovation project? Kelly, do you have anything?
Um, they, when they come to do the survey for the well, they're gonna try to go out and do an initial survey of where the channel will be. Um, we've contacted the landowners, um, haven't heard back from them yet, asking how they wanted to be contacted, but, um, so they're gonna try to go out and do an initial survey. They've met with MDT, um, they're trying to work with them to figure out what we need to do, because it's, it's not their project, because it can take two years to get a project through MDT, but it's our project, so we're trying to make sure they kinda keep hands off a little bit, um. But we're hoping that we would start construction, um, in the fall. But that's, who knows, depends on MDT, and if we can get the culverts that we'll need, I've been talking with Chris Lee to try to get him to see if he can make them. And now that we actually have been awarded the, the grant, he's gonna check into it more seriously. But it would be nice if he could make them here, because that, the transportation to get them here, as big as they are, and to have them done, it could be a long lead time, so if Chris could do them, that'd be nice.
Yeah, plus.
Mm-hmm, so hopefully he can get the forms or whatever he needs to do to put them in, but it's moving ahead slowly, but it's moving.
Hey, Kelly, anything else?
Uh, we will be presenting about it. Crystal and I, Headwaters and Great West. Uh, we will be presenting about it, Chris Lee and I, Headwaters and Great West at the flood plan administrators um, meeting in the end of February. And then we put in to present it at the national conference in um, Louisiana at uh, in uh it'll, it'll be in uh, May of this year if we get it. Um, so, yeah.
I thought it was next year.
No, it's this year.
Thought we had to do it both, two years in a row.
Nope. Um, and if the, by going to the AM, AFFM conference um, they'll pay for one person that goes to the conference to go to the national convention, so the DNRC has already pretty much said that they would pay for one of us and Headwaters said they might help with the other one to go.
So Wally's gonna have to hold down each court.
Wally's gonna have to stay here. But we'll go to Louisiana. No, it's in Louisiana, it's in um, that's national. I don't know where the regional one is, we didn't, we skipped over that, we just wanna go to
Well, we have to do with the one, we're gonna do the one in Missoula.
Yeah, Missoula's the, the state one and that's, we're definitely in on that one, we're presenting at that one and that'll be our practice, so um, we'll find out after then if we got accepted to go to the Louisiana.
Just because I am totally ignorant on it, like uh, the, these presentations, like who, and what are you like convincing or, or?
It's educational because this, this collaboration that we've done here is very unusual, I guess. Um, usually you don't have a city that can find nonprofit like Headwaters Economics that'll come in and help and pay for the initial bills. And then you have them and Great West and DNRC and the state DES all came together to write the grant to get FEMA to be able to fund this project. It was turned down initially, but the second time around, we actually had Region Eight FEMA helping us do stuff too, to give us suggestions on how to make it better and to apply for the flood mitigation assistance grant and not just the brick grant. So it's a big collaboration of everybody and that doesn't typically happen. It's usually the big cities that have all the money to be able to write the grants get it. The first year we applied, all the grant money went to the coastlines, nobody in the middle got it, so it's presenting that it's possible for a small community to be able to protect themselves from a flood. You just have to be creative and have all these people help out if you can, you have to look outside the box, so it's for locally, it's more for the smaller communities to say, you can get the biggest grant that Montana's ever gotten from FEMA, um, because Three Forks did it. Um, the national, it's more because of the collaboration, cause usually you don't have this many agencies helping to protect two thousand people. I mean, that's pretty much what it is, so it's more to get the word out there that there's options. Um, cause
Most of them shy away from me applying because of the twenty-five percent match, a small community can't, how would they ever come up with that? Three Forks is pretty fortunate that we have a good budget and we've been smart and saved, but a lot of communities don't, they wait for those, you know, they're, they're twice a year income from taxes and that's all they have, so by thinking outside the box and coming up with all these different entities, I mean, Headwaters spent, probably spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars so far on us, which most communities don't have that at all and they don't have the, they don't have the nonprofit that could help them write the grants or anything, I mean, if Kelly and I were writing that we probably wouldn't have got selected, not with my writing, you know?
Well, you're better than I am. And also DES did a resiliency fund, a couple, every two years they get money for their resiliency fund and they're giving us twenty-five percent match and so our SID will be for extras, cause we know our easements are gonna cost us more than what we put in the budget because land's more expensive and they can, you know, we just, we haven't got the final numbers yet, so we have that to fall back on for the SID. But once we know the final fi- figures, then you guys will decide if you want to keep collecting the same amount on the SID for a much shorter term, or if you wanna drop it down and still collect it twenty years, you'll have that option instead of twenty years, this is what everyone's gonna pay, there's either gonna be a shorter term or a lower amount, so you guys get to be the good guys to decide that. Because of DES, the Department of Emergency Services, we didn't even ask for this money, they are giving it to us because of the project and they they feel the project is very strong and, and needs to be done to help Three Forks, so I mean, we've been very fortunate. Um, but nationally, Headwaters and um, DNRC think that our story would be really good to help nationwide, because usually the bigger communities and on the coastlines that get more flooding are the ones that get the help from FEMA and, and the small communities like us have been ground up, have the disasters and then they have to come in and pay all the money, but if they could protect those communities first, they wouldn't have to pay later.
So the resiliency fund is not always a given and so Kelly testified at the legislative committee that was hearing this um, last Friday to ask them to put it in the state's budget every, every time, like make it something that's always there, not just when you have some surplus, so hopefully that'll change too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Hey, thank you Kelly.
And Crystal.
We need to come up with a name like Brangelina.
Okay, for new business, uh, City Kirk Annual Business License Report, that's you, yes, Crystal, right?
Yes, that's me. So it's in your guys' packet, if you switch back to new business. Um, cause I'm not gonna read it word for word, but basically in the code, it says that I have to give you a report every year, so I never saw one until a few years ago at Institute, Quarks Institute. So I've kinda gone off of that, cause I don't know what has been presented in Three Forks before, but I just gave you the total of what we did last year. Um, which was two hundred and twenty-eight businesses were licensed, those aren't all brick and mortar in Three Forks, there's lots of I mean, L and L Services is out of Belgrade, they license with us, Republic licensed with us, Verizon, DirecTV, all sorts of people that aren't here in town, but so we had two hundred and twenty-eight businesses, um, and we, we tend to get you know, a couple handfuls of new ones every year and a couple handfuls that say I'm not gonna renew this year because they only came for one or two years doing a job, so last year that was ten new and eighteen that weren't gonna be in business anymore. We had one that was a big violator that was selling alcohol without a license and so we turned that over to the Goughton County Sheriff's Office and Susan Swinley um, to enforce that. I think Susan talked to their attorney who took care of it immediately, but they ignored our letters when it was just letters coming from City Hall. This year, um, we have so far, which it started in October, um it, we're down, so we have two hundred and sixteen that renewed, um, twelve are new and then thirteen of those, it's just that they aren't renewing for various reasons. Um, eleven, so we send a first letter saying it's going to expire in, you know, the end of next month. That comes and says, okay, it's expired, you have another month until there's a late fee for it. So three months go by with letters, so it started in September, October, November, they all got letters. Eleven have not communicated saying what they're doing and some of those are you know who they are, and so they're still in business, they're just, don't check their mail or just it slipped or cracked or it's you know, it's stuck there in a pile of paper on their desk, I don't know, so it's up to you guys of what you wanna do, so that's why, I think this is probably why the code says to report to you each year, so I broke it down, um with who those are and asking you how you want me to proceed, just send another letter, send it over to the Goughton County Sheriff's Office or whatever, so the bottom one, let's see, it would be exhibit C, C. Because there, there, there's more that have not licensed, but there's like ten or eleven of them that are actually seasonal and I know the snow cone people are gonna license when it's snow cone time again, and so I'm not really worried about them, but there are some that are um, actually, you know, painting contractors or general contractors, maybe they aren't doing anything here anymore but they just haven't communicated that with us, so I didn't know what you guys wanted, how do you want me to handle the next step?
These are people that have already received three letters?
Any letter says to contact us if you're no longer in business or not working in Three Forks, but so these are just
Just exhibit C.
They've already received one letter?
They've received three.
Three?
I mean, like what normally happens, I've no idea.
Last year, the only one I was really worried about, I mean, it's about the same amount, like in previous years, I just took them off the list. I just took them off the list, but there's some that
We know they're still.
You know they're still in business, I don't know if you want to ignore it, if you wanna me to do something different. I'm not, I'm not a police officer, I can't issue a ticket, my, I just send letters, so.
Well, I think if they're in violation of the code and ordinances, they should, it should be enforced, absolutely.
Yeah.
Jean, do you wanna make that into a motion or? Yeah, I'll make a motion that for the, the eleven businesses that have not responded to the letter from City Hall uh, on their uh, business license that they returned over to the Goughton County Sheriff's Department for aid or help with collecting.
I'll second that.
Jean?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yeah.
George?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh this time, are there any further comments? Mayor and council announcements, I do have uh, or forget these are the new committee chiefs. And they haven't changed much, or been, you know, so if you would like bring it up or you want to be on something else, you can talk about it at a later date. And then, uh My favorite person has got landline anymore, I'm that old.
Do you want it on there, Ed?
Doesn't matter, I mean.
What's easier to reach you at, your cell phone or at your house?
The cell is easier.
Okay.
Sorry, Randy, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, uh, last week, uh, I met with Patrick's longer hand, hand uh, from the Goughton County Emergency Service, but we, uh, we've just talked about that a little bit with our for our last three years and uh, he, every five years, he has requested that we come together, have a little, get together and for those who can make it, I would appreciate it to go over our hazard list, uh, such as uh the flood, fire, everything, so how we would rate them. And so I would like to either next Tuesday or next Thursday maybe get a, uh, Crystal, you said like a nine o'clock meeting and it won't take very long, we'll just go in and rate these and uh thankful for Crystal and Kelly, they've already, theirs down, we had talked about, one of the items today that we changed uh, on the number was uh, dams and believe it or not I was talking with Patrick about it and uh, the Willacre Dam, for example, nineteen thirty-eight it was constructed and I was talking, I've been talking with some ranchers about it, about it once and, and the Almoons and uh I do believe this is a big problem because of the age, because now they cannot uh, get it up to the spillage because they're afraid that something could happen. Couple of years ago, you saw on the, on the news, the dam up at uh, Kenton Lake uh, one of the spillways failed and so these are all things, uh, but it's a list of everything from fire to clear down to the dams to everything and it will only take us a little bit to go over it, discuss it and put, put down uh, our ratings on it, and this is all he needs. Mark Davis, uh, if we can have it on Tuesday the twenty-first at nine o'clock or the twenty-third, Thursday at nine o'clock. This week's just too busy. Either day or night, could be. Uh, if you can't make it.
You can email us, you're in for me.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that, I can email my list.
So if you could do that, that would be fine, but uh, anyway, I'm asking everyone to be there and then we'll just go over this, where are you gonna meet at?
We'll meet in the library, we could all sit up there in that Montana room.
We'll be in Montana room.
Is there a, is there a list?
I'll send it to you.
So I just thought I'd shoot that out to you, uh, I met with Patrick, we've been, you know trying to get together, I did meet with him and they do have a lot of services for us. And uh, so I think it would be a good idea for me as mayor to keep in communication with him and let you know what's going on, but this is one of the things, last one that was done was twenty twenty-one, Keith, Ronnie's name was on there, George Reich and one other person and he, and Patrick had held a meeting, so it was Keith's and George's.
But that was just one of their many meetings, cause Kelly and I attended some other meetings.
But this was the twenty twenty-one that we, he took, showed me the last, yeah, he's had other meetings, but not this one.
They send us, just so you guys know that DES for the county, this five-year plan, ha- like how are we gonna handle everything? If we have a major disaster in Three Forks, are we gonna have meetings here, cause City Hall broke down, like it's all a guide, a policy of what would happen if there's a flood, do we all sleep at the school, you know, you know, those kinda things is what it's talking about and when COVID happened, we actually had to utilize it and all the various appendixes for each different kind of disaster um, to get federal funding, um, so that, it's really important that we do these meetings throughout the year or attend one of them here and there, so Three Forks is represented. Um, Patrick, I don't think is very clear in all of his emails that this would be a great one to be someone from your town to be required, so if, to attend, because Kelly and I get all of his emails and they're, they're bullet points and it, nothing stands out to either one of us that we need to find a Three Forks representative to attend those, so um, on that way like if, Randy, if he can highlight that for us or something like that too, because we, we have a lot of meetings, so it would be helpful if it's one in Bozeman, you know, it's, it's, they're at the, at the DES Command Center, I think, is still at the fairgrounds, isn't it? Yeah, and so I mean, that might be close to one of your guys' works or something like that that you could attend it, but it just has to be a Three Forks representative, doesn't have to be Kelly or I or the mayor or, you know, Keith, but somebody.
And Keith goes to a lot of them, cause they talk about fire stuff, so the last time we did get lucky, cause he attended enough meetings to, and we attended some to make it, so Three Forks was represented, but it was mainly the fire department.
And I did the list that we, we used the list that was in there from twenty twenty-one and we, Kelly and I increased some likelihood of what we think would be uh, would actually happen or how many people in the population it would affect, they might, they rank it zero to three. A lot of things were ranked one and two or like we thought flooding is probably more like a two or a three, not a one or, or one or a two. And same thing with like, I sent it to the school, the ambulance, the fire department. The ambulance said they think we need to add skydiving on there, not just an aviation accident, but actually people. Um, cause of the skydiving out here, so and then the school, we have active shooter on there already, they didn't have anything to add, so we do have some collaboration, but we'll send it out to you too, I'll send out to y'all, but.
So, uh, Tuesday the twenty-first nine o'clock. Okay, okay, George? Okay, well, we'll plan on Tuesday the twenty-first at nine o'clock at Montana room. Do what you think, okay, that's uh basically all I had tonight. Are there any council announcements? Okay, well, uh, before we adjourn, uh, let us, let me let's look on that second page there on one twenty-eight, we'll read in the annex and order, uh, recommended impact fees, we'll cover it, uh, what's going on there and uh and of course, in February, we'll have the library. Next meeting will be out of channels. Okay, do I have a motion then for adjourn? My turn, thank you guys. That's easy.